If you would all stand and join me, we're gonna have an invocation first. Most gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the opportunity together here today. We want to thank you for the folks that are here today that have traveled long distances. We want to thank you for all the things that you do in our life. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct us today to make the best decisions for this community. We want to thank you for those folks that are protecting our country. Bless them and their families, give them strength and courage, and help them in their daily lives. We want to thank you again for everybody being here and help us to be the type of Christians and children that you'd like for us to be. Amen.
Amen.
Let the record show that we're all here. We have a quorum. And if you would all join Councilman Ellis, he's gonna lead us in the place of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is at this time in our meeting that we are always glad to welcome visitors and receive public comment. We'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. We have a couple of visitors. First of all, we're glad that Mr. Lutz is with us tonight. Thank you for being here and thank you for filling out, filling in for the Reynolds family. And we hope that they understand that they are still in our prayers and I hope they're doing okay. We're glad that the fire chief's here and Mr. Quaberton, wherever he went, we're glad to have him with us tonight. We're exceptionally glad to have Amerillo Police Chief Robert Taylor that's with us tonight. He's here on the Amerillo Protective Police Chief Association. Thank you for making the trip. We're glad the police force is in here tonight and appreciate you being here. We're glad Elizabeth Seer's here and we're gonna give you a portion of our program here in a few minutes. And glad our legal representatives here and the rest of the staff. Thanks to everybody for being here and the council. If there's anybody in our audience that would like to make public comment, the floor's now open. And we're glad the Youth Advisory Council is here. Thank you, guys. Okay, if there's no public comment, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our meeting tonight. The first thing I'd like to do is to turn the program over to Chief Rice and Police Chief Robert Taylor. I think he has a presentation that he would like to...
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we've been striving real, real hard for the re-recognition program, we've gathered new, for the best practices for the Chiefs Association. Hey, come on, guys, turn around, your own camera. You know, I can sit here as the chief, I can take pride in this thing, but these are the people who put it together and these are the ones that abide by it. So, can you have a plaque to present us?
I had to memorize this, so I'm gonna read, "But, I'm Robert Taylor, the police chief from Amerillo, Texas. I'm a Region Two representative for the Texas Police Chiefs Association. And I'm here this evening to present to Muleshoe Police Department with a certificate of re-recognition for continuing to maintain their compliance with our best practices program for the past four years." About four years ago, the Muleshoe Police Department became one of a small group of agencies in the state of Texas to become recognized, and that's not easy to do. They had to complete a complete audit of all their policies, procedures, and operations in order to meet our standards. Since that time, they have submitted annual reports, which were reviewed to ensure they continue to meet our standards and provide effective police service to citizens of Muleshoe. In March, three trained assessors came to Muleshoe, the police chiefs and command officers from other parts of the state, and they spent two days making another assessment of the Muleshoe Police Department. They interviewed the staff, inspected facilities, rode field officers, and ensured compliance with all of our standards. The report was then sent to the recognition committee, which I'm a member of, and it is comprised of nine active police chiefs throughout the state of Texas, who reviewed the report and voted to award recognized status, and that vote was unanimous. During this process, the Muleshoe Police Department has once again proven that they meet or exceed the best practices standards for law enforcement in Texas. This evening, we officially recognize Muleshoe Police Department for their outstanding performance. They've become the 33rd agency in the state of Texas to maintain recognized status for a continuous five years. So, the Muleshoe Police Department has fulfilled the necessary qualifications and mandatory requirements of the Texas Police Chiefs Association, Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Recognition Program. By voluntarily proving that you and your department are in compliance with the Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Program, the Texas Police Chiefs Association and its foundation board award you this certificate. So, congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
And one last thing for the council. You know, agencies the size of Amerillo is ever, you know, they have kind of an advantage in this program, and they have a lot of people who throw at this program. Smaller agencies don't have that, and it takes everybody on board to make this happen. So, you really ought to be proud of each other.
We are very proud.
Yes, we are.
We are.
Hurry up, hurry up. Our sergeant will get in here eventually. Can you get us off?
Cassie, maybe we just could do him just a little bit more. She tied him. There we go.
Y'all came out good.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys.
Y'all disappeared, y'all run.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and continue with our meeting tonight. The first thing we'd like to do on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of December the 8th. I trust everybody's reviewed those minutes, and I'll make a motion. Will we approve them?
On second.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing we would like to do is to turn the floor over to Cindy Seer, which is the Watson Junior High Principal, and she's going to talk to us a little bit tonight about the possibility of a sex offender ordinance.
Basically, my name is Cindy Seer, and I'm here as a resident here in Muleshoe, Texas. At this time, Muleshoe does not have a city ordinance in place addressing residency, loitering of our registered sex offenders, and I would like the city council to consider putting one in place, like several other communities. I have a few samples of other city ordinances in place for you to read, or if you would like, to consider this for our community to help keep our children safe.
Do you want to expand on that any? Do you have some really good reasons for us to consider an ordinance at this time?
Just the safety of the students and the children in our community, and we have several sex offenders that do live within the city limits and outside of the city limits, and I'm just asking for that.
What does the state law say as far as sex offenders?
Look at the attorney.
I will look at the attorney.
I'll say a couple of things, and I'll turn it over to the attorney. And we appreciate Cindy coming here. The Chief has, Chief Rice, has been looking at the sex offender ordinance and there are some, certainly some considerations that need to be made in that. Also, when I talked to Slater about it, he had, prior to this issue coming up at Muleshoe, had been looking at it. So, they're gonna have a lot better answers than I will.
Generally speaking, Texas law has child safety zones as it relates to sex offenders for people who are on probation, parole, and in some cases, for a period of time after probation or parole ends, based on certain classifications. These deal almost exclusively with residence, residency requirements. Almost all of them that I've seen are gonna have a grandfather clause in them for people who are currently living there. These cannot be punitive in nature, they have to be, they have to have a rational civil purpose, and usually that is going to be to keep them away from temptation and to keep children away from harm. I mean, that's the easiest way to look at it. Interestingly, and we're gonna need to look at it, but TML sent out a big notice over the holidays, it was like the 20th of December, and there's been years and years of litigation going on in Carrollton, I believe that's where it was. And one of the big fights in that, there were two, and one just doesn't make sense. And one is that the people on the, it sounds wrong to say the side of sex offenders, but against these were saying, you know, this one just targeted child sex offenders, and so in the end, part of the settlement was that it would cover all sex offenders. I think that's gonna open up some problems with broad, I mean, that it's too broad. If your purpose is to protect children, to include people who have no history of problems with children, may not make sense. The other thing, this is, will be interesting to find out what was behind it, they dropped the loitering part of it as essentially unconstitutionally vague, is I think what they're gonna say. You know, what is loitering? I mean, is that, you know, going from here to there and not walking fast enough, not driving fast enough? But I don't know. We've seen that in with the holidays, nobody's had time to really understand what it means. But they are, they are hotbed of litigation, but there are, there are some ways that I think if they're carefully constructed, you can minimize some of that. So, we're familiar with them, your police chief is familiar with them. They will never go far enough to please some people, they'll go way too far dealing with others. You know, in a town like yours, when you start looking at carving out, you know, some of these are 2,000, 2,500 feet down to 500 feet, most are at 1,000 or 1,500 feet from every school, park, church, daycare center. Not all of them have churches, but daycare center, including licensed home daycare centers, you start going at 1,000 feet, that's a long ways. You end up completely excluding any real place for sex offenders to live, and that's not to try to gain sympathy for them, but when you start saying there's nowhere for you to live here, is when you start running into problems. What happens when you carve out places for them to live? The people that live right there aren't happy. So, it's something that there needs to be deliberation and thought on, and do it right the first time, so that you're not always reacting to it. But that's kind of the general consensus of how those work in Texas and other states. Texas has had less litigation than a lot of other states, don't know why, but that's kind of how they operate.
Typically, the sex offender ordinance regulates residency.
Right.
Not necessarily where, places where those folks can, can attend. In other words, if you have a sex offender who has children in school, they still can attend school function to be a part of their education.
Yeah. What they really look at is fundamental rights. You know, the, again, it's a generalization, is it really can adversely affect their fundamental rights. You know, being a part of a family is a fundamental right. What neighborhood you live in, the courts have said, not a fundamental right. You know, just different.
Despite the little...
And so, there's a lot of, a lot of work that have gone into these, like any good lawyer does, we look at what people have done in the past to help guide us forward so we can avoid some of the mistakes they've made. But yeah, it's really a residency issue.
So, what happens right now as far as if someone were to move? I mean, obviously, we have some in Bailey County.
Right.
Okay, so, when someone moves into Bailey County or within the city of Muleshoe, do they register? If they have this offense? What's that process?
Yeah, and there's different things that happen in different parts of their, of the process. If they are on, well, regardless, if they have to register, and some people are required to register their entire lives, and if they have to register, they have seven days from the time they get here, whether they're going to live here or be here more than seven days or 14 days, I can't remember. But I mean, if they're even coming for an extended stay, they have to register, and they have to provide their identifying information of where they're gonna be, and that's the registration part of it. Now, while they are on probation or parole, meaning if they were on probation, went to prison, they came out on parole while they finished up the ultimate length of their sentence, they will almost always have restrictions that prohibit them from certain acts. And those are not just residency, but the loitering. They can't go hang out, and it's funny, because you can tell when these started coming into vogue, they can't hang out at video game arcades. You know, we don't have many of those anymore, but we used to have lots of them. They don't know what those are. But the rest of us spent our youth in them. They can't hang out at swimming pools, they can't hang out, you know, in different places, can't hang out in a park. And again, they're not residency-based, they are truly prohibitions on being in those locations.
These are stipulations put in there by the court.
Right, those are probation or parole, so...
So, how do we know about that? Because to me, it's like when you say that you're abused for the safety of children, I mean, I would want to know that.
Well, there are notification requirements, and I can't tell you what those are, but there are certain times when, especially you're dealing with probation or parole, where notices given to certain people, and I can't tell you what those are right, right here, but we can get that information from you. There is a public website, you can go to that website and find the addresses. I mean, you pull it up for Amerillo, and you know, you'll see all these clusters, and you wonder what the heck's going on. It's the apartment complexes. You tend to see clusters of sex offenders in, but it's public record, and so...
DPS website.
I believe so.
Since we don't have an ordinance that deals with them in any way, do you think if we had one, it would deter people from actually living here in Muleshoe?
You know, it could. You know, I know that, or I don't know anything, but if you read the articles, you know, that people struggle, you know, and you look in Florida towns, and you have all these people living in these, these little kind of homeless shanty towns, and they're sex offenders because there's nowhere else that they can find that is an okay place to live, you know, people might be drawn to those places because there's a place for them to go. People might not go. You know, I think it just depends.
Since we don't have an ordinance, do they tend to move to cities that don't?
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't tell you. And what you're talking about is really gonna be after they're off probation and off parole, which means they're dealing with a lot of things. They're dealing with significant problems finding any type of employment. My guess is what's gonna always drive it is where they can get a job. And I know, I mean, this is a former prosecutor and someone who's dabbled in criminal defense from time to time, that it's very hard for them to get jobs. So, they're gonna go where they can find employment.
Mrs. Seer, would part of that be notifying everybody? Because I don't, I've never gone onto the website to see who all is. I mean, I just never have. Would that be something too, that would be part of that, is to let people know who they are? I mean, can you do that?
I would think not.
Okay.
Because, because you can't have something that's punitive, and I think courts might look at notifying that it's punitive. Or we do see stuff like that as almost always, from what I've been reading, done by judges when they're on probation or parole. There are towns, or not towns, but there are judges who will require a sex offender to put a sign in their front yard. "I am a sex offender, stay away from me."
Wow.
Yeah.
So, the judge would do something?
The judge would do something, and the judge has immunity, and the judge can't be...
Right, right, right.
He or she are in a lot better position to do something like that. You can also see where the neighbors, while they might be happy to know, might not be happy with the property value of their house next to a sign that says a sex offender lives here. So, lots of, lots of balancing issues to think of. But really, what this is going to be is ultimately would fall, I think, in my opinion, on your police department to know where they are. I'm assuming our police department is the registration entity for this county?
We do, we do. We do registration and notifications.
And so, they're the ones that are gonna know where they're living, even if they're off probation and parole, if they're still having to register. And so, they're going to probably be in the best position to know if there are violations, and the violations that I've seen are Class C misdemeanors, the equivalent of a ticket. But the idea is, is you know, or somebody knows where they are, but your police department would already know where they are. It's the idea of keeping them kind of in the same locations that they were restricted to while they're on probation and parole. I think that's the one big difference you would see. It's kind of a continuation of what was in place earlier in the process.
Because what I'm hearing is just to protect our kids in this community, and somehow, maybe I would like to learn more about it and just really, and maybe have a discussion, you know, with you, or, and sit down and really look at it, and what can be done? I mean, what can we do, maybe inform people that there is that website to look? I don't know, but I understand that, that protection of children. But I would just like to learn more about it.
One thing I think we need to think about, or you might want to think about, the definition of sex offender is broader than a child molester. They're not all, they don't all target children.
And I think that's what I meant by learning more. What are those terms? What do they mean? What?
And for example, Dave brings up a good point, the city of Arlington, when they passed theirs, theirs only deals with habitual sex offenders. Okay? So, that may still be broader than what y'all want, in some ways, and not broad enough in others. I mean, and so, as you look at the definition, I actually have their ordinance, and I looked at it, and habitual sex offender is somebody with more than one conviction. Well, I think that makes sense to us, you know, if all, we can all find some place of forgiveness, and somebody can make a mistake once, but if they do it twice, you know, let's get after them. But the way it's written, somebody with more than one conviction, and what you often see in these situations is two convictions that will come out of even one incident. You know, that they will charge, you know, you know, two different acts happened at the same time, there'll be two convictions that come out of it. So, is that what we mean to cover? I mean, you just have to be careful about how you define it. Some places have said, we're only gonna deal with child sex offenders, and it doesn't make sense to me, but that became a big fight in Carrollton, you know. The, you know, there are people that will point to studies, you know, that talk about, you know, whether these are good or bad, based on the fact that most children's child sexual assaults are gonna happen, and the overwhelming majority by somebody who knows the kid, as opposed to what they call stranger danger in these studies. There's just a lot of thoughts, and that sounds like to me what you'd like to see, some more of that, and I bet you we can, we can come across some resources.
And I would just like to be able to have a discussion, you know, not invite Mrs. Seer to, you know, whether it's a small group or someone that's appointed or anything, just to kind of really delve into it and look at everything, and what that process is, and just learn more about it before any big decision.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of legwork that needs to be done before we even consider something like this. And one of the things that comes to mind just right off the bat, you know, being in as small a town as we are, and the schools that we have, and just daycare, well, I tell you what, if they extend very far, we could blanket the town pretty quick.
Well, and Slater made a great point, if you live outside of a restricted zone, you live there with your kids, and the city has moved sex offenders into your neighborhood, you know, because they can't let them live here, and now they got them to live beside you. And it is gonna be a smaller area, so, yeah, I think there's a lot of... I'd like to...
A lot of discussion to be had.
I'd like to have information from you, from, if you have a committee or whatever, and especially our police department, because they're gonna be the ones that I think probably know our town better than anybody and know what we need.
I think that's a place to start, is just if we could have a group.
Sure.
And I'd be more than willing to be in that group and have that discussion and just start researching and start really learning ourselves more about that.
Yeah, and there are some sexual offenses.
I've heard a few that have been happening.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we do. Okay.
Chief, do you, your guess, I could be beneficial to Muleshoe?
Just like the other thing that we discussed before, there's a pros and cons to all of it. One thing that comes to our attention, it's kind of like I ran and clipped a dress ball to go. We've recently had a court case where individual, or not, I'm sorry, not a court case, but such, came in and registered, and we asked, "Why did you come to Muleshoe?" And they said, "'Because there's no ordinances prohibiting me or restricting me here.'" But, you know, when we first sit there and look at it face value, then that is an issue that concerns, because they're coming here, but they like to bring it up, real estate, you know. I don't even live next door to them, and I don't want them to, but it wouldn't be a problem either, nevermind. But, you know, we don't want these people just living in an area where our real estate in town starts going down. We want to keep our town marketable. And as far as you having a discussion in a meeting, I think it'd be a great idea. Cassie is our sex offender resident here, she's wanted into the training, she knows and deals with all of them here inside the city limits. Would be more happy to sit down and discuss what would be the pros, what are the cons, and what are the needs?
Could we put together a committee with maybe council, some of the staff, Mrs. Seer? Would that be possible?
We want to try to schedule anything yet as far as special meetings?
We could. Y'all tell me when?
Yeah, there's not a problem if the council is that committee or a part of that committee just understands subject of meetings, that they have any partner hosting, just like any other meeting, which is not an issue. Yeah, we're certainly not trying to hide anything. Well, I understand that, but sometimes we think committee instead of council. No, no, it's gotta be just like any other special meeting that we have, I mean...
And I think...
I do.
...a notification and everything.
Sure.
I think the mayor can appoint that committee at any time, whether it's here or at a different time. You can give staff and attorney directions to review existing ordinances that are out there, if you put the case law or statute.
If Slater would review some of that law and stuff, and if you've got some sample ordinances that you think would work, would he be beneficial for our community?
No, I think this is a good time with, obviously, there's gonna be a lot of guidance coming out of this Carrollton, and it's just a settlement, so I mean, there's nothing that's gonna be binding. It's been going for four years, and so, there will be a lot of insight and a lot of writings coming out on that over the next month to six weeks. I would expect something pretty significant from TML, and that'll be the first place I'd probably turn.
just understands subject of meetings that they have any priority of hosting.
Sure.
Just like any other meeting, which is not an issue.
Yeah, we're, we're certainly not trying to hide it.
Well, I understand that, but sometimes we think committee instead of council or
No, no, it's, it's gotta be just like any other special meeting that we have, I mean.
And I think
Positive notification and everything.
Sure.
I think the mayor can appoint that committee at, at any time, whether it's here or at different times. You can give staff an attorney direction to, to review existing ordinances that are out there if you put the case law or statutes.
If Slater would review some of that law and stuff, and if you've got some sample ordinances that you think would work, would he be an official for it?
No, I think this is a good time with, obviously there, there's gonna be a lot of guidance coming out of this Carrollton, and it's just a settlement, so I mean, there's nothing that's gonna be binding. It's been going for four years. And, and so that, there will be a, a lot of insight and a lot of writings coming out on that over the next month to six weeks. I would expect something pretty significant from TML. And that'll be the first place I'd probably turn, is to my friends down there. In fact, over the holidays, as, as we got, and I started looking at this and getting more interested in it, I've had communications with them and I may even, at the summer convention, present on this topic, either this one or the other one, but it's a big deal and it's, it's always changing. So it's a good time, a good time to be looking at it. It's something that y'all can look at over the next couple of
What kind of timeframe do you need to prepare something?
You know, I'd try to be pretty agreeable. Y'all tell me when you want to do something.
Are we talking thirty days, sixty days?
Thirty, sixty.
Tomorrow. Okay. If it pleases the council, won't you let me appoint a committee? We'll appoint a chairman and then y'all can get together and accumulate information and, and make suggestions as to what we need to do. Is that the right? We'll pass on the item and then we'll, we'll get the work studied up.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Mrs. Bessier.
Appreciate it.
And so we'll be notifying folks as to how we need your help and
Well, we had a Slater, Cassie. Chief, what kind of timeframe do y'all need to, to prepare for something like this?
Well, I think we could have a duty to just eat that. In fact, we'll even offer the training room of the police department. We'll have tables and dry erase boards and laptops wherever we need there, if you want to have it, have it there.
Maps also be available, of course.
And I think that, that would be something very educational for everybody to, to see if there are patterns and, you know, I mean, as shocking as it may be to have fourteen in this community, I don't know if that's a large number or a small number, but, but once you start seeing it on maps and seeing how things, how things work and apply, I think y'all will be more interested in that than you are the nuances of the law. I think that's a great starting spot, so whenever y'all want to start on that, feel free.
Well, and one other thing you have to remember, if we, we attempt to do something like that in the city, it has nothing to do with county.
Right.
So, you know, there are the boundaries of the city that at some points are fairly close to churches and, and points that youth may gather, so you have to take that into consideration too. Okay, all right. We're going to, we're going to the next item on our agenda. We're gonna consider resolution number R seven oh two. Thanks for everybody being here, and if you choose to sneak out, we'll, we'll be in touch with you. We're gonna consider resolution number R dash seven oh two dash zero one one five, suspending southwestern public service and proposed effective rate. Date in their December eighth notice of intent to increase rates, rates for our electricity. Notice today is the deadline that Today is the deadline to, to suspend those, those rates. December the eighth, XL filed an application to increase rates by twelve percent. For those sixty-four point seven billion dollar rate increases. Once again, the steering committee working with consultants would ask that this resolution be adopted so we can extend that timeframe to, in order to negotiate to review the rate increase requested by XL. So we have a motion that we extend, uh, do we adopt that? Second. Suspension and second. Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro, pro, no? Motion carries. Next thing we'd like to do is consider entering into a contract with Retail Coach for community market analysis as recommended by the MEDC Board of Directors. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to Casey to see if she can talk to us about that.
Well, thank you all. And the EDC met last Thursday evening with Erin Farmer of the Retail Coach. And the Retail Coach is a established business that helps to do market analysis on communities for mostly retail development, but a lot of the information they use can be spread into some other stuff that I think will be very beneficial. And Erin has been with the company for eight years, and he's helped it grow, and he will be our point of contact if we choose to go further with this. And some of the things that they gather and analyze to evaluate for us are just straight up strengths and weaknesses of Mule Shoot, demographics and psychographics. And that was a new term to me, so the psychographics is not what product you're buying. It's, uh, it's what specific brand you're buying, uh, how much of it you're buying, what size. So it, it dives really deep into data and it's very specific. They establish our geographical trade area mostly through a license plate analysis, so they're, they will come to Mule Shoot and, and take some information from parking lots and some other stuff to really figure out where people are coming from, and they'll map that out for us and show us what our actual trade area is for Mule Shoot. And they'll analyze our surrounding competition, so other communities, so we know for sure what we are up against, a retail gap analysis. So what is leaving Mule Shoot? What do we not have and people are seeking out in other communities? And, and they'll also do some interviews with some of our current retailers, both national and local. With that said, our first priority would be to our existing businesses. And so they will have access to all this information. And so they'll do a complete workup and then have a community meeting where all of the businesses are invited and they get to have that information. So hopefully it would help them grow, show them some opportunities where they might be missing something. And then moving beyond the data is something Erin really focused on. And the data is important and it tells us what we need to be looking at, that we're missing, but they also have those contacts with other people. So if it's a need that maybe none of our current retailers can fulfill, and they have the contacts with some of those other businesses that maybe could fill that gap for Mule Shoot if they see that it could be profitable here. And then down to pricing for this project. It's a twelve-month project period, and that would be a twenty thousand dollar fee for their services plus up to two thousand dollars for any sort of incidentals they have. That's map renderings, some travel expenses, and any of that. So I think that this is all information that Mule Shoot would not be able to attain on our own. It's very detailed, and I think it will be very beneficial to our current retailers and then to our community to fill some gaps where we're missing some things. So the Mule Shoot EDC asks that you will accept their recommendation to hire the Retail Coach, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
I've actually seen the presentation this group did at a conference, so
They're very involved.
Very thorough and very knowledgeable.
They worked for several cities, and I know David had a chance to call one of the cities that Erin told us that he had worked for, and so he had a chance to visit with some of them too.
Very favorable.
Like who?
Talked to Navisoda, and they've used Retail Coach for five or six years, a number of years. And Brad was telling me that, he said, he had a lot of good things to say about them, and Erin Farmer's the guy who's worked with Navisoda. He said, "I will tell you, we have not opened a new retail business because of Retail Coach, but the information was invaluable to our local businesses that were there, and, and they were able to use that data to adjust and change their, their business."
I, I have a couple of things. They said they have eighty-six percent returned customers. So the cities that use them go back and use them again. Their returning customers, actually they have all their data and everything. I think it's about half the price for the next year, the next time they work with them. The other thing they said, like she said, the first priority is to help the local retailers. He'll come in and put on like seminars and workshops with those retailers to provide them with that information and try to help them grow their businesses to be more successful.
Does that include it in the twenty thousand dollars?
That's a, that is kind of part of that two thousand that's in.
I think he said he'd be back at least like three
Three to four times.
Yeah.
Within that year. And I will also add that he did mention, Colt had asked, and he told us that any information and data and contacts that we have within that one-year period is information that is owned by Mule Shoot EDC and the city of Mule Shoot. So it's not like, uh, you know, he's not gonna tell us who he's working with yet. We have access to all that information, and he said that I could be involved in every correspondence he has with any business. So we have all that information at our disposal.
In, in our meeting as well, he said he drove around town before coming to our meeting, and he says, he sees a lot of areas that we could really do well in. He said one thing, and he's dealing with it in other towns, that he said is the ALCO's closing. There's a couple of companies that he said that could come in and buy, ALCO's would put businesses back into them. Of course, he probably has the insight on those businesses, and so I think that could be very beneficial for us as well.
Sometimes someone on the outside can look at things that we don't, because they for us, yeah.
So you just have to go
That's okay.
So you just have to go forward with this, how long before you get any information? Is it twelve, you gotta wait twelve months or?
Oh, no, I think he, he would go ahead and start some contacts specifically with the ALCO just because there's some time-sensitive matters there. Not all of those empty buildings will be filled, but there are a couple of retailers that are interested in some of them. So we definitely want to be on that list of interesting communities. And with that said, he said he'd probably look at being back in March for that community meeting, which means he's got a lot of the data by then.
Could there be like a monthly report? Just kind of more or less what's happening or what?
Sure, so you mean like how the progress is going?
What progress, what, I mean, sure, just something every month that we can hear.
Absolutely.
What's going on, this is what's happening, this is what's seen so far, just to keep up with everything?
Sure, I think that's great, and of course I want y'all to be able to answer questions if the community has any questions. Uh, y'all are out there, so I want y'all to be able to answer those questions. So absolutely, I would love to keep you informed.
That'd be awesome.
The, the economic development, everybody on the board went, was for it. And we, we're just starting to be relatively beneficial. Coming from the EDC, we were hoping that the council would pass this as well. Any more questions? I'll make a motion that we go on a contract with the Retail Coach. I'll second that. Can we have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro, pro, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, next thing we'd like to do is to receive the December two thousand fourteen financial statements. I trust that everybody reviewed that, and I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
And then we have a second. Is there any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro, pro, no? Motion carries. Now we would like to have a report from the Mule Shoot Youth Advisory.
The first thing I have is that our meetings are going really good. We've had some really interesting discussions. At our meeting today, YAC kind of took some opinions from everybody there and decided that, we thought it would be a good idea to look further into having a sex offender ordinance, and we also thought it would be a good idea to bring the Retail Coach into our city. And YAC will also be having our annual brisket fundraiser dinner on Sunday, January twenty-fifth, and we actually moved to the First Assembly Church, and it's from twelve to one thirty P.M. in the Family Life Building. And the tickets are eight dollars, and we'll be serving brisket, beans, cobbler potato salad, rolls and drinks, and we will also be playing bingo while we have our dinner. And we will also be having an Easter fundraiser. We don't have all of our details yet, but we'll get back to you and let you know what we decide for that. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I'd like to order one of those Italian pancakes too.
There you go. I, I do want to, they had a great discussion with the sex offender thing, they had good questions and, you know, and that's like I told them, that these are things that you do want to learn about, and they do affect you. And so it's, it's wonderful to have that opportunity for them to learn, that they are, are putting in their community.
It's pretty interesting going to their meetings, because sometimes they ask different types of questions than we do.
That is true.
And so you learn a lot.
Sure.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to have the administrative reports. David, that's all yours.
Thank you. Let's, let's sit on your report as, as a blood drive to see how they seem to see things who are safe, point units of blood. I think that's still a pretty good turnout, not, not the records that we have had.
The illnesses and all kinds of things were contributing to that.
Terrible things, a couple of things that are not on your agenda. I'll be attending the education training task force that was set up, set up by the TCMA on this Wednesday. Next week, Nia is going to election law seminar, she'll be teaching for
Ever.
Ever. She will be the teacher of
One of many, one of many. As was Slater in this, right?
Yes, Slater will be there.
And what else?
Wednesday, I think Ramon and, and Zayn are going down to learn from these esteemed scholars. We're, we hoping that the first of January, we get the things back to normal, but we're afraid it's gonna be the last again.
There's no normal.
That's all I've got, I figure.
Do you need counsel, any remarks?
Just keep up with your legislative updates, we're gonna get it. Very interesting. I just want to encourage everybody about the Governor elect's statements. In fact, I will have a, a conference call regarding that with TML on Wednesday.
Anyone else? We look forward to the brisket lunch. Who would be the best person to contact for tickets?
They all have them.
Good luck with that. Thanks for everybody being here. We're going to take about a five-minute break, and then we're going to continue in a work session in regard to the charter amendments. So, just about a five-minute break. Discussion. Okay, David, I want to turn it over to you.
Well, I may just turn it back to you, Mayor. I sent out last week, and I hope everybody got a copy of the charter as it is, and then the draft ordinance for the charter that, that Slater and Brian have put together with some comments that I had added to it. So I, I, like I said, I'll, I'll turn it back to you guys to see which
Okay.
Any of that you want to discuss, anything that, that that Slater didn't not put in the, in the ordinance, or that we did not comment on, anything that comes from y'all?
I think the simplest thing to do this, we, we went over it the last time, and then this is another draft of, of the possibilities. I think the simplest thing we can do is to just ask if anybody has any comment with any of the ordinance as is, or the changes involved in these propositions.
Okay, well, I have, like, so, I mean, okay. So like on the very first, on, on page two, where it says proposition number one. Okay, if, if, it says for and against, is it in proposition number one just in general that you're gonna make changes throughout the charter?
Yes.
What do they say if it's against, they still vote for all the rest of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, each proposition stands on its own.
All right, gotcha.
And this one just deals with non-substantive
See, that was my question.
These are non-substantive.
Anything else that they're on?
Yeah.
It's not on. If all of them pass, but
It's not own. If all of them pass but one, then that one stays the same. Or if all of them fail, then the charter stays the same.
And this is, number one is dealing only with verbiage for the most part. So, I mean, you know, if it says he, you know, it might become person or councilperson instead of councilman. Those types of things sometimes were through the years, if there have been some changes where we've lost some consistency, but they mean the same thing. This is editing, not changing. Okay? So if, if it was failed.
If it fails.
They'll stay the same. But if all the others pass, they'll still pass. They, they cover different things.
Council, understand, whenever this comes out on the ballot, it's going to be proposition one for or against. Proposition two for or against.
Where it says, where it says ballot text, that's what will be on the ballot.
Okay. Gotcha.
Not, not the, the explanation.
Okay. Gotcha. All right.
So they will know that these things are listed as changes.
Yes. Non-substantive vocabulary changes is the, what we use.
It'll sidewalk proposition one says that.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. One of the big things was gender stuff, right? So on page three, proposition number four, where it says in the one, two, the fourth line, largest number of votes, entire city, casual place, which he seeks, shall be elected, which he is a candidate.
Okay. That's what it is now.
I'm looking at this.
Right. Right. That's the.
If that's what it is, then it would change to he she.
The charter currently provides in the section that you read. I'm not telling you it's not going to say the same thing when we get down here. I'm trying to read ahead.
So then on page four, it has he she. Right?
Where it should, um, candidates, then it should be.
It's up at the top.
No, but.
But that's not the ballot text.
What was on the ballot is ballot text.
That's, okay.
Starting there.
Gotcha now. All right. So then on the ballot text, I was confused where it said, okay, they're going to run for district one, two, three, four, or for mayor, as the case may be. And she'll be voted on and elected accordingly by the majority vote of the registered voters of the city at large. Just the mayor at large or just?
That's not.
See, that's confused. Only the mayor. But when I read this, it makes it sound like everybody's at large. So am I reading it wrong or?
We, we will work to clear that up. I mean.
That needs to be clarified.
Okay. Because I, I know the mayor's at large, but.
The rest aren't. And so with the understanding that everybody is on tat or in agreement on that, we'll play with that language a little bit if, if y'all decide to approve these tonight. Or whichever ones y'all decide. If this is one of the ones you decide to approve.
Did, uh, when, when the city elected, when the original charter was in place, and council members were elected at large, were they elected by plurality?
Yes.
So I think that's what the, the difference that we're trying to make. Do you understand what I'm saying?
But that at large at the end, I think is what you're, I, I get that. Yeah, that's why.
With the mayor and the at large in there.
Because originally, everyone was, everyone voted up for everybody.
Okay.
But, but you were elected by?
Placed.
Placed. By majority or plurality?
Correlate. You ever got the most votes?
Yeah. Did not have to have.
Even have, have a majority.
Okay. But now you, we do have to have a majority.
We do. Because we have more than two.
So I think that's what this is trying to say. The mayor part doesn't need to be in that. But you have to receive more than fifty percent of the votes to get elected. Where in, in the original charter, what's in the original wording before the court case changed that, if you had three people running for one position, the person that got the most votes, even though it wasn't fifty percent.
One.
One.
They never had a runoff election. Okay. But now you can.
Yeah.
Now we have to. Like, because it has to be one.
If you had one that got forty, and one, two that got thirty, and one that got forty-one, well, now that won't work. Or thirty's about, and twenty-five would be better. So I think that's what, what we're trying to address there.
And I remembered this. I called Brian. I said, no, wait. And he, you know, when the person who writes it explains it to you, you go, yeah. And so, but now as I'm looking at it, I'm confused again. So that tells me that we need to get it clear. Um, and we'll just make a little change there. And if y'all are good with that one, we'll move on to the next.
So what it's going to say is council members are elected at, in, in a, in a single member district by a majority vote. And the mayor's going to be elected at large by a majority vote.
Instead of combined, pull, carve them out.
Yeah.
All right. Page five, proposition number five at the top. It doesn't have to talk about absences. Isn't it dated over here? That's the only reason I'm asking, because it does in the original.
Where you have to attend so many meetings.
Because it was in that same little section, so that doesn't have to mean.
I mean, it's up to y'all. I mean, y'all tell us the, the way that you want to do it. Um, you know, I come from a very dysfunctional county. My first job was with Potter County, you know, and, and they had different things. There was always a, trying to get rid of people. I do question, this isn't a legal opinion, I'm just telling you, my concern is, you know, when you have those requirements to, if somebody misses to get rid of them, that, that that invades on the, the, the right of the citizens to elect who they want there. You know, they have a chance to get rid of them if they want, and that's by voting them out. And unfortunately, what we see is people just continue to run and get voted back in when they don't pay attention. I'm not going to fuss with you either.
Just because in three oh two, absences is addressed. And on.
In the existing charter.
In the existing. And so.
But if it's not here, then it's not being.
So, so it's not going to be addressed here.
That's for me, that's, y'all make that call.
In the existing charter.
Let's look, yes, let's look at.
That's a little.
That was intended to keep people from running and getting elected, and now they are coming to the meeting.
And we know if these do not have a form.
Have you got a charter?
We all got one.
Yeah. That's why it's, because I'm going back and forth and not the one.
Which, if you remember, is the reason that, you know, the charter said that we'll create, the council shall create a vacancy if there is more than three consecutive regular meetings, which is what council has.
The first sentence being made. This, this proposition five just premen's the first sentence of section three oh two. The first sentence of section three oh two says, each member shall be a city council, but shall be a resident of the city, shall be an owner of real property, should be a qualified voter, uh, lived in Mewshu not less than two years, and changed that to six months.
Yeah. Understand that.
Right.
Right.
We're meaning the first sentence, which means the rest of it stays.
Everything else stays. That's what I'm asking. So everything stays because only the first sentence is being amended. That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Page six, on section three oh four, compensation.
Yes.
All necessary expenses and then reimbursement. So is that, does that mean that when we turn in expenses, all the council has to approve it?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Um, back to the gender.
Wait, that's what that says.
It says, and approved by the city council.
Should be presented and approved once again. The city council approves all those.
Well.
No. Not really, no. Not really.
They're authorized, they're authorized in the budget. And, and they're accepted in the, in the financial statement. But no, you don't look at the itemized statement. I think to fit, and, and I mean, you certainly could if you wanted to.
I'm just reading it as someone who's going to vote. And, and I mean, I don't know.
To make it fit with, with our, with our practice now is just a period after itemized statement.
Yeah.
Or, or if you want to put it, it's authorized by the city council, because then it, then it is done in the budget. I mean, it's going to be, it, it can't be paid.
It could actually end after the reimbursement.
Necessary.
Or, yeah. Yeah, you could just. Or, yeah, you could, entitled to reimbursement for all necessary expenses incurred, performed, their official duties.
Period. Which is basically what we do, right?
Yes. I mean, it is authorized.
Because of the budget.
Through the budget.
Through the budget. And, and it is accepted when you accept the month of the financial statement.
So whenever it is, I'm like, that has to be presented.
So y'all want to stop it after duties or after statement? I think either way accomplishes your internal practices. You just tell me your preference and.
After duties, really.
And we ask for itemized whenever, before we pass.
Because that's part of that process. Yes. It's just to me to sound like it's got to be presented.
But that's what it says.
It's not on a proposition, but in the original, on section three point oh five, where the mayor, about the mayor pro ten, it, it's all, it's men and women.
Okay. That'll be taken care of in.
Does that in that first one?
That's the global, global changes.
Perfect.
Can we on page seven?
Yes.
Back to my point.
Uh, obviously, I want to clarify some things with proposition number eight, which also carries on to proposition fourteen. About the first workshop we had. Um, I don't think that staff, council, or the news that I read understood the point I was trying to make. And so I do have a couple of points I want to discuss. With proposition, changing proposition eight and fourteen, um, this is kind of how I consider it. I don't understand why we'd want to back ourselves, or put ourselves in a situation that we would have to use the lawyers to litigate our decisions as a council. To me, this would be backing the council on a corner with no way to act. It has nothing to do with micromanaging the city by the council. Essentially, there is no way for a council member to micromanage the city for the reason we have to act as a whole. Matter of fact, your reasoning that this would force the council to micromanage is absurd, considering the fact that this is how our charter is currently set up. To my knowledge, the council has not done any actions to micromanage. I'm not sure why you want to limit the powers of the council. The reason I say this is in my profession, uh, what we try to do is anticipate problems that can arise. And to make sure every course of action that we take runs smoothly, um, it's not my intentions to try to back the council in a corner with no way to act. And micromanagement has absolutely nothing to do with my stance on the situation. I believe that council all agrees that we do not want to micromanage any part of the city. If an issue ever arose with staff coming in for the council to deal with an issue at hand, with that going up the chain of command, I would hope that us as council members would have enough common sense and business mindset to explain that is not an issue for council to handle. And that's my stance on the situation from the last time. But I did not come across and get that to you guys, staff, council, and the news clearly. Um, and so you guys take that, what you want to do with it. But my, my stance on it has nothing to do with micromanagement. We could sit here and toss around all types of situations that could arise. Um, and, I mean, there's so many different things that could happen. But there's one little problem that could ever happen that you might have to use that. And then it may never happen. And if it does happen, none of us may be here. But given the council the ability to act in that situation, I think something that the city needs to consider.
What do you have a proposal?
I, I would like to remove proposition number eight.
You want council to be able to hire and fire employees? Or fire employees?
If, if the need ever grows.
I'm not here on a day to day basis. I don't know the ins and outs of day to day. It's all there's a city manager.
Certainly, that is.
I think if, if you're going to remove that, go back and look then at, at the power and duties that are assigned to the city manager. Because I think what, this was singled out because of conflict of the duties of the city manager to manage employees.
So in your time of being here, when is the, and it's set up that way currently, when is the council ever conflicted with your powers?
One, one time there was an attempt to.
But it didn't happen?
No, because I said it's not going to happen. A council member that wanted to pull a ranking five employee in for questioning in a closed session. So it's not happening.
I mean, some of the chances of this ever happening isn't likely.
I tell you that it has happened. And, and from my standpoint, or from the city manager's standpoint, if, if I have an issue with an employee that I addressed that's not suitable with that employee, and the employee wants to come to council to air those grievances, if the council agrees to, to visit with that employee, then one of two things, I won't be city manager here anymore. Or the council's going to get every employee issue.
So since the time it did happen, it's happened once.
Right.
And the council hasn't had any issues past that.
No. But the council did not interview that employee, did not hold him.
My, my issue isn't the fact of trying to intervene, or, I just feel like removing these powers is backing the council and taking one. Um, which any issue that might arise, like I said, if you have some issue that comes in, every employee bringing every issue to you, surely the people sitting in these seats are going to have enough common sense to say, don't bring this to me. That's not what we're here for.
But, but if you're going to see one, you can see them all.
That's why I said I don't want to do the day to day.
Not if you have a good system. We've never, I've been on here eighteen years. We've never had a problem.
I think you might be surprised how many employee issues we actually deal with on a day to day basis. The last few weeks, we've had numerous.
I would love for y'all to handle everyone.
No, I don't want it.
It has, it has nothing to do with us handling every one of them.
But, but if.
If you allow one, you got to do it all.
As a city manager, I'm subject to being overridden in my employee decisions, not fired. And that, that's where you do that file. But, but to be overwritten, the number one, one of two things, I'm not going to do it, or I'm going to send every one of them in here. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go, because employee issues are tough. The hardest things that we deal with. And we've had some lately that are really tough.
Sure don't. I can just imagine.
That they're going to reveal them all. I'm not going to go through the pain and agony of dealing with that issue with, with council willing to, to look at it over time. I was going to say you get them all. Now, proposition fourteen, in my notes in there, as I reviewed it, think about it further, that needs to stay. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, my issue with fourteen, well, first of all, I don't, I do not want to give up any power that was ever designated to the council originally.
No.
I don't. Not that it was designated for us to use. It was, it was created for them to use over the long term. And so I don't think we should change that. On number on proposition fourteen, I think that if we, or a council in the past, now, or in the future, has the power of inquiry of any part of this city, I think that you need to put the word employee back in there and not take it out.
But in proposition fourteen?
Yeah.
I can't remember.
My proposal with an oath is. My proposal with the oath is saying, leave it just like it is.
Yeah, but you didn't put, you didn't put employee back in there, you've got office, department, agency.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, we don't put it on the ballot.
Yeah, it's stated.
You don't write them out here with states.
You're gonna leave it completely off. Proposition fourteen doesn't even go on the ballot.
That's your decision, but that's my, my proposal.
But I still, I still, even in, in proposition eight, in any of the propositions listed in all these pages, I don't feel like the council should give up any power.
Then we need to go back and look at section 3.08 that prohibits the council member from interfering with management employees, and change that. Have a proposition that would change that. Because what we're saying, there's, there's a conflict in the charter.
Right.
One, one proposition eight says, or, or prior to adoption, proposition eight says, council can deal with employees. But then, in section 3.08, it says council cannot deal with employees. So, if you leave proposition, or if you take proposition eight, you leave that section like it is in the charter now, you gotta change 3.08, or you're still gonna have a conflict.
I don't wanna deal with employees.
Can I, can I just give you something to think about as an employee? For employees, if they go through, and we have a chain of command. If we go through the chain of command, and they know they still come to council, and if council should override what we deem right now as the final say, which that stops at the city manager's office. And we're looking at the future here, we're not looking at the people that we have in place right this minute, council or staff or employees. But if, if that comes to council, and council should override the decisions that have been made through the chain of command, then I think that creates a problem in, in you keeping a city manager. What city manager wants to work for a council who is gonna override their decision whenever it comes to an employee issue? And I'm not talking about even a department head level, I'm talking about a rank-and-file employee, who, whose job is very important, don't mistake what I say. But that makes your city manager ineffective.
Right.
I think that's a real consideration, something that you really need to consider. What city manager wants to work for a council who's not gonna stand behind it? And I'm speaking for me, David and I have not had this conversation, but I just, looking at the way our structure is, I just think that that's very important, you know, absolutely, you know, in, in proposition fourteen, where you have, you know, you can come to the city manager and say, "So what happened with this? What's going on with this employee, you know, I'm hearing all this stuff on the street." But for employees...
Or you can sit down as a council and actually, that authorizes it to subpoena witnesses.
Yes, yes. But, but for an employee, we have to have structure, we have to have definite structure. You know, it's kinda like your, your home. You know, so one of the biggest times, I was ever in trouble is I asked my mom for something, she said no, so I went for my dad, and he said okay. So, you know, I was in huge trouble for that. As department heads, we don't want employees doing that. Then they come back the next day and pretty much then, you know, thumb their nose at you and say, "I can do what I want to." You know, that creates huge problems for our efficiency and the way that we're able to do our jobs.
So when do you think they ever put it in here in the first place?
I mean, I'll give a guess, and I haven't gone back and looked at, looked at the dates, but it may well have been before a manager, council, former government was adopted.
I think it was probably they took a sample, some sample charters, took the language out of sample charters, and put our charter together. I would guess, much like we're looking at ordinances or whatever. And maybe didn't really look at what, how one conflicted with the other, possibly. That's just my guess. But I just ask you, you know, as an employee, you know, we, we work all the time on employee morale. We, we have a definite structure in chain of command. Ramon and I talk all the time about how we were brought up in the business, I mean, and there was no doubt what chain of command was and what it meant, and how we're supposed to conduct ourselves, and that's what we have preached to our employees for years. So for them to think that they can come to you and have whatever overturned, it might or might not go that way. But if you do overturn what's been done, I mean, it, it tears down everything that we've created and that we've worked for, in my mind.
I agree with you, as far as running employees, and I, I personally don't have a major problem with most of what's presented here, because if we did have a major problem with the way, let's just say, for example, David handled something and he eventually did it, I mean, my take is we'd fire him and get a new, new city manager.
Or if he changed it, he'd walk away and say, "You know, you don't need me."
Right.
So, so I, I agree, because employees need to have one head honcho that says they don't need to have us up here.
Well, and we're not here every day.
A committee.
We don't know.
The way I look at it is, and I know there's a thousand examples, and, and I'm just gonna start pulling names out of the hat. Let's say Ramon's got an employee in the street party, and he decides they're not doing their job correctly, they've done something, whatever the case may be, and he decides it's time to terminate that employee. And I'm sure before that happens, he's gotta go through you, there, everybody will be involved in this process. And you decide, Joe, you gotta go. And Joe comes to the council, and for some reason, the council hears this and says, "No, you gotta keep Joe." What is that gonna do?
The, the other side is, if, if council has some questions, if, if Joe does go and talk to me individually, then proposition fourteen, or, or that, or the charter allows you to come and ask some questions. You know, what's, what's going on?
Well, that fourteen is not individually doing, making the inquiry.
No, no.
It's making the inquiry as a council.
The council knows they can come and ask any time what's going on, when they hear that.
And what if, in the future, you had a city manager that fired somebody, and we asked why, and he said, "It's my, it's up to me, it's none of your business."
Fire this city manager.
And not fire the city manager, because it is our business.
Get rid of him.
So what's wrong with inquiring into what happened?
There's nothing on it.
We're saying the inquiry stays.
And what's wrong with hiring that guy that should've been fired in the first place because of the ignorance of the county, of the, of the city manager?
I lost that one.
I think it makes your city manager ineffective.
So, let me ask you this, you have... If you have to make that change, why should you not have the power to make that change?
Well, I...
And you do have the, you do have the power in the city manager's office. But I can tell you here lightly, you would've had some people in here seeing you, and, and it wasn't, it wasn't in the best interest of the city, it wasn't in the best interest of the organization, it wasn't what was best for the citizens. That's first and foremost on our minds, how we're servicing, how we are service, providing service for the citizens of the city and we all share. First and foremost, not anything personally. But it makes us inefficient if, if at the next council meeting, you have three or four employees that wanna come and talk to you about a decision that was made.
So basically, you have two options, is the way I see it. We go ahead and have proposition number eight, and proposition number eight passes. Okay? One day, you have an issue that comes up, city manager doesn't take care of the issue. First option, the only option you have then, fire the city manager. So if he has a contract, you pay the twenty or thirty grand, there went twenty, thirty granted, and his contract, you pay it out, there went tax dollars.
He's a pretty cheap city manager.
Well, we had some cheaper ones. Well, the reason I say twenty or thirty grand is because the last time we brought this up, Slater said he usually tries to write those contracts at three months payout, something like that. That would cost about twenty or thirty grand, so that's fairly accurate. So then you fire your city manager and take care of business like you need to. Or the powers remain, just like it is. We don't have to deal with it because you guys take care of your job. That's the, that's why we don't have to deal with it right now, because you're taken care of. That's the way it's set up right now.
No, it, it, there's a conflict. If, if, okay, let's say you, we take proposition eight out and leave it in the charter, just like it is. Then you've got that section that says council members has authority over employees. And then you have section 3.08 that says council member cannot interfere with management employees. So you've gotta change one or the other, or leave it in conflict.
So, your second option of dealing with the issue, if there was an issue there, right? And you don't remove these powers from the council. The council has the ability to overthrow the city manager's decision, which probably that ever happening would, a hundred percent probably never happen. It would be some crazy ordeal. But you overthrow the city manager, you don't have to spend twenty or thirty grand in tax dollars to buy out his contract. And then the city manager goes, "Well, he overthrew me, I'm done, I'm quitting." You know, it's a win-win decision.
What if the city manager doesn't do that?
If he doesn't quit? Well, then you've destroyed the chain of command, like we're discussing, but you sit there and try to hold out until his contract's up, and then it becomes a conscious thing.
So who you gonna hire for your next city manager?
I don't know, who are we gonna hire?
We haven't got there yet.
Who?
Said we haven't got there yet.
You think city managers are not gonna know that this is a council that won't stand behind you? Or the first thing that hits the street?
Exactly.
I don't know, considering, it's just kinda like Slater being a lawyer. They go a lot by precedent and what's happened in prior court cases. I figure our council kinda sets a precedent of how it's gonna happen and how we take care of business. Just having the ability to act is all that I wanna do. But by no means does it mean I wanna come down here and deal with day-to-day operations.
That's what you're asking for?
No, it's not.
I think you might be surprised at what comes before you though.
Once it starts, good luck.
You're asking for the power to do that, and, and it does, in my opinion, does not need to be there.
I agree.
I'm saying, from my opinion, the changes need to be made. We don't have as a council, the authority, the right, or anything else to interfere with day-to-day operations between city manager and employees, period.
Or honestly, in some cases, the education is to some of the things that we've had to deal with. Here lightly, some of the things that we've had to deal with have taken some research. They've taken visiting with council, attorney involvement, because we've worked really hard to make sure that we've done everything exactly right. For an employee to walk in and, and present to you, you know, then you're gonna have to take the time to, you know, you can't make a determination right then, because you are gonna have to research that and the things that it took us some days and some time to do.
There were some sympathetic issues. I just believe that we don't have any business in a day-to-day operation, and right now, I think as a whole, as a council, we feel like we are blessed with the staff that we have from the top and bottom.
And that has been said as far as what's expected.
And it's, we don't have to worry about it, and we're thankful for that. When their tenure is up, regardless of who it is, and whether or not it's this council that makes the decision, or the next, or the next. If we don't do our homework and hire the right person to start with, and find ourselves in a situation like this, then we did a bad job. That's on us.
And that's a job in, in, a big job in and of itself, is whether it's us or somebody else.
If we make a bad decision, and we put the wrong person in there, and they can't do the job to our satisfaction, then it's time to start over, regardless of what it costs. We don't want them, we don't need them, we didn't intend for this to go to where it's going to to start with.
That's a job alone.
So what, what happens if proposition number eight does not pass election? Then you still have the conflict?
You still have the conflict.
I'm, I'm done talking about it, but we'll see what the citizens.
We'll just let the citizens.
Well, I mean, this is...
I, I understand.
And we're sure, we're sure to try to make our case. You guys are the one that says, "Here's what we wanna put on the ballot," not us.
That's a very sophisticated point.
And I understand the necessity of the chain of command. We can't do anything unless it works like it's supposed to.
The council is always at the end of that chain.
We are, and they, and they all, and whoever they are, always will be.
But please just remember, and let me just say, whether we're talking about this proposition or any other proposition, our charter was created in nineteen sixty. We've had one revision since then. In the next fifty years, or ever how long it's gonna be before this is revised again, just please, please think about the far-reaching hand of what, what you're doing tonight. I would just ask that. You know, this is such an important document in what we do, in how we operate, and, and for the citizens of Willshee. Please just keep that in mind.
Slater, did you have something?
Um, I did, but I can't remember what it was. It was more anecdotal than anything.
About sophisticated points.
Yeah, well, and, and I guess, and I guess he kinda made that point, is I had a client, I didn't like hearing it at the time, but they said, "Just remember, Slater, y'all make recommendations, and we make decisions." And, and so ultimately, this is up to y'all.
Word by...
And how you do this.
Word by...
But, but think, y'all be thinking about this, because when we get through these proposals and talking points that y'all have, we're gonna need to figure out how we wanna do this. And, and there may be more than one of you that don't wanna just say, "We have twenty whatever here, who votes, so we go forward with these." Some of y'all may want to be able to take an individual stand on certain ones, so be thinking. We don't have to make a, a decision right now, but in the next, somewhere between fifteen minutes and three or four hours, um, need to decide how we, how we wanna wrap this up. And, and, and I'm gonna support you on however you wanna do it, but be thinking about that. And let's continue working through these, and, because here's what I do know at this point. If there's nothing anybody's gonna say that's gonna change individual minds up there. Y'all have thought about this, you feel passionate about it, there's not necessarily a right or a wrong answer. So, let, let's go on, and then we'll figure out how we wanna, wanna handle this, wanna make our decisions and move on. Is, are y'all comfortable with that?
And, and I wondered if we might need to back up just, just a tad here. Are we gonna wait till we get to the end of this and say, "Okay, what do y'all wanna do with this?" Or should we take these one at a time and make a decision right now on that one?
And let, let me give you some background on that. And y'all, we have combined some steps. You know, we talked about that first time, how sometimes there's a committee first, and the committee makes decisions, and then they come to y'all. When I worked with the committee in Snyder, when it came time, um, I mean, it's a committee, it's less official than y'all, I called a vote on each one of them. Say, "Number one, everybody that's in favor." And we had a couple of people that said, "You know what? Put me down as a no on that one." Now, this one's a little different because it's an ordinance. But, you know, I think if we want to make decisions on them individually, that is, is certainly fine with y'all, and in the end, we'll craft the motion, which is, you know, we move to pass this ordinance with the realization that we have all yeses on these points, but we have no by Eric on this limited point, by Gary on this limited point, you know, so that there is a record of, of how this goes. And I believe there is education in that. I'm, I'm surprised at how many people in the else community watch this video feed. And so I don't have any problem with y'all doing that. I, that's why I say I want y'all to think about how you want to do it, and we can go through these one by one. I, that's how we did it in the past with the committee, y'all are kinda filling two functions, so it's what y'all want.
Let's go ahead and go through all of them, and...
Go through the discussion and come back and bubble on each one.
Well, however y'all wanna do that, but let's go ahead and go through all of them, and decide whether presented as is...
And that's what I was saying.
It's just a notification of...
So I think we're, we're on page seven, and you, you know, we're kinda going in chronological order, which makes sense, so whoever wants to pick up their next thought or question, let's, let you have the floor.
We go on to proposition nine. Anybody have any questions about page, anywhere on the rest of, maybe other pages and the rest of...
Since some of these right here get more benign, so... Some of these right here get more benign, so yeah, take your time and flip through there. Any thoughts or questions? All around.
On page 16.
Anybody have anything before page 16?
I got one on 13.
Okay.
On the change here, the simple change, we're on behalf of this, on number 14. With little blue squares and over to the side, it has notes on the.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to put in there that you could execute on behalf of the city notes?
The question is, do you want to put on there? I think that might not quite allow it.
No, my question was if that's put in there, just like it is, it's still up to the council, wouldn't they authorize those things?
Sure.
But just like, just like the other day when you and I went down to the bank and did that, to make that work until the next budget cycle.
Well, that one actually was approved in the last one.
Right. But all of that's still subject to the council.
Yeah, and that's under the following conditions.
Right. That's the only question.
This just makes the city manager's signature on those documents valid, subject to the conditions of.
Well, a lot of times by ordinance, we also include that too. That's the only question on the rest of them.
Okay, page 16, Proposition Number 18. This is a question for, or against?
I'm sorry, I was reading and I thought you were leading into a question I think you asked.
No, I mean, it's in a question.
So then. That's the way it's written right here.
Can I completely delete that proposition?
Yes.
You're not worried about type of draft order, errors on this one?
Let me back up.
You see one.
Slater and I talked a little bit, this is back at page 14 on Proposition 16. And that's the proposition that city manager hires the city secretary with the approval of the city manager. In the notes, I suggested maybe talk about, do we put, and terminates the, the city manager terminates the city secretary with the approval of the city manager?
Fires and fires like the rest.
That's not in the police department, the police chief section. What we talked about is, does the council have to approve hiring, does that infer that they also approve termination?
As the person who represents the council and not staff, I would certainly argue that because it's, I mean, it's an expansion of y'all's power. And I think if they have to get your permission to hire them, I think it's inherent in there that they have to get your permission to fire them. Is it better off if it says it yes, if we say here, then do you have an inconsistency? Because when you say it in one place and you don't say it in the other, I think legally, and I didn't, and this, I'm not sitting back and, I'm continuing to think this out, is you may have a different interpretation. If one says you have to have y'all's approval to fire, and in the police chief, it doesn't say that, that might mean, that might have significance, so.
I consider it.
Yes.
Could be used.
Yeah, used against someone.
So I guess the fix is add a proposition to change the police chief deal. Or leave out this termination part of the city secretary.
And keep them the same.
Yeah.
And y'all tell us.
That's what I'd suggest, because that reduces one proposition.
Yeah, I don't think that even though.
Yeah. I think it's going to be overwhelming enough.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
So what do y'all think? Give me your ideas. Just leave out the termination part of this, I mean.
I think so. I think it ought to fall under, just like any other employee. It's an employee change. The council still has to prove that termination for those two positions.
Does nobody say so? Sorry.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is an authority requirement.
If you're worried about type of draft orders, look on page, errors on page 17, number five.
Wait, where?
Page 17, number five.
Page 17, number five. The 18 years of age or older on the first day of retirement to be bylied after the election.
Oh, I see. Oh, five, okay. I won't fire Brian though, until it's all done and then I'll tell him that he's fired. With the council's approval.
In his defense, that probably didn't need to be spelled right.
Yeah, no, that's probably right. But I was telling my secretary, just because it was the wrong word, I mean, it was spelled right. Okay, what next, guys? Page 16, is that kind of where we were?
Page 25. Well, there's a question there. It says, does this need to be included?
Oh, and I haven't talked to Slater about that. I'm thinking, shoot. This says the joint election shall be conducted with the Bay County Hospital District. We actually contract with them annually. So I don't think we want the charter directing us to do that.
That's what I'm saying. At some point, at some point, that might not be a good thing.
Yeah, I don't think the charter should direct us to have that election.
And that is one thing, for flexibility purposes, probably makes sense. You know, we're not required to have elections with the school district. I think the law says the school district is required to have it with us. It's one of those crazy things.
But that's another year.
And frankly, we are one of the few that do like we do.
And serving, not even required to do the hospital district.
No.
That's my issue there is, I don't think we ought to obligate ourselves in the charter to do that.
Because y'all do that whenever it comes up and then.
Right.
And if at any time either side.
Well, it could be that we go, Leanne goes, talk to the hospital district this time and they say no. We go, wait, no, our charter should.
Well, and one of the things that we've tried to do is to build in some, you know, we'll do a state law. You know, we'll follow state law. And that's probably advice we ought to take in this way as well. So just, so the proposal would be, you look at this, just take out Section 3, because if there's anything in there that needs. Okay, I think that, I mean, I'm telling y'all as a council, that that makes sense.
Well, and that's not actually even in the charter, that's the ordinance.
Doesn't need to be in there, no?
No, well, they need to be in there that election will be conducted.
I suppose that we don't need to, you know, at some point in time, chances are, elections will all happen in November. We believe that there's a push to that.
But this, this section is not a charter amendment. This is the section pertaining to the ordinance, this ordinance.
Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
But I still don't think it should.
That is, I agree.
I think, I think we just spurred that, that we have, this ordinance calls for an election to be held on May, whatever, in accordance with state law. So that's not even, it's not a charter issue, it's an ordinance issue.
But who we hold it in cooperation with can be in ordinance.
And that's what.
Well, that's.
And if you bring that up, it's not, this is an ordinance, this is a proposed ordinance ordering the election, which is different than the way we normally order elections. Normally, we do that by council action, but because it's a charter election, it's required to be ordered by ordinance.
To the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about.
Does that make sense? That, yeah.
Yes.
This thing ends at that line.
Right.
This is what Brian and Leanne were talking about.
Yes.
With me as an intermediary. I thought, okay, that, does that make sense? That is not part of this deal.
That's not.
It's not part of the charter, but it shouldn't be part of the ordinance either.
No, the tax section.
The ordinance should not direct us to conduct the joint election.
The ordinance should not.
The ordinance should not.
So that, that's not anything that we have.
That's not a charter, that's an ordinance issue, not a charter.
Do you may also have any questions about proposing?
I mean, they changed it.
Next thing on the agenda is action concerning home real charter work session.
Right. This is where, this is where you can approve, disapprove, add, change, that's what we want to do. So we get the ordinance set out, so we can bring it to council at the February meeting, call for the election in May. Now, Slater talked about you can do these one at a time, so we record folks on them. There's also, and we could, I think the council could do it somewhat like a consent agenda. We could say, okay, we can make a motion to approve these 29 propositions, with the exception of any proposition that any council member wants to pull out because they won't be in favor of. Do you agree with that?
I think, anyway, y'all want to do it.
Or you can have 29 votes.
But still, even if on one proposition, if there's only two negative votes, then it's still going to throw it out.
It doesn't, but it would be listed.
Nobody records, it records that it was not you handling the budget. And that consented, let the people decide. Yes, yeah, it still lets people decide. If it passes three to two, it still goes on the ballot. People are going to decide on all that.
29 different votes.
There's probably only one proposition and then they'd be against us, me.
Well, me, Colton hired only two negative votes on the whole, on the whole thing. So why?
Well, I think, well.
I think everybody else is in favor of the whole thing.
Except for the changes that we asked.
I mean, I don't want to take that for granted, but.
I mean, I've already addressed like, the specific question.
Fourteen that's in here, I think everybody agrees we need to not make that proposition.
We're going to X that one out.
Pull that off the ballot. Everybody agree with that? There's also, and we didn't talk about it, and I don't, I can't call it off my head, but there is a proposition that requires the city manager to have the budget to the council 60 days before. We made a proposal 30 to 60 days before. And really, kind of inherently the way we've got a budget, I mean, we've always had one that far ahead. I might think about pulling that one out, or the council might want to think about pulling that one out just to reduce the number of ballots.
I think that's 22.
22, is that what it is?
Do you think this is too overwhelming for both of you?
We're going to the voters for three elections. We're going with the charter election, we're going to go with the sales tax election and the mayor's race. So, three, and this is lengthy.
One, and the flip side, because nobody asked me. The flip side of that would be just taking one off of 20-something, materially change it. And so if y'all are going with 25, does it make much sense to go to 26 and clean it up? I'm not telling you, I'm just, that's the other version.
Yeah.
Considering as often as we did, we might as well.
Give it clean.
Get it cleaned.
Give it cleaned, yeah. It's not going to change. When I looked, I thought, one of the things I was looking at, what can we change and what can we eliminate? How can we reduce the number of propositions?
Now's our opportunity. We're having an election. Now's our opportunity to do everything we can do that might be the next 50 years.
And I think that, once the council decides what proposition we want placed, and we need to have public hear. Publicize it well and hopefully hit some, the public here. We can certainly do presentations of senior citizens or whatever, or anywhere else to explain the propositions, not to.
Campaign.
Campaigns or, would not be allowed.
So let me make sure, I understand, you're the one working on deadlines and the dates and the timelines.
Okay.
So is your idea that this ordinance would be approved at the February meeting and then mailed out?
The last statutory day to order the election is February 27.
Okay. And so that gives y'all time.
But if council's ready, I mean, it makes sense to me for council to order that election at its regular meeting in February. I mean, I think that looks perfect.
See your letter or have.
Or a special meeting to do that.
And that would then finalize and set the propositions.
Whatever, we actually go with, come with the order.
So now, so we could say that, like, 28, because we took out one, right, so it'd be 28 propositions.
Yes.
And then if there's any that someone's against, they can have that say-so, so that could be listed.
They want to pull out, to vote on separately.
Okay.
The other.
I like that idea about infinite and then having a say-so.
I think you could make a motion to approve propositions with the exception of eight and 14. That's the two.
Now, wait a minute.
We do the motion to approve eight propositions.
To, I guess it's to correct style, including the ordinance. All the pro.
All propositions, with the exception of.
With the exception of eight and 14.
And that be voted on.
Separately.
And I read you made that motion.
Yes.
One second then. Is there any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
And so let's take up 14 next, if y'all are okay with that. And I think the better, more clear way to do it would be to say, I move that we not include Proposition 14, or the draft of Proposition 14.
I disagree with our attorney. So I don't think you make a negative motion.
I think we just don't include it in the order.
Well, then we're, then we're going to fail for lack of motion.
I think you have to take action. But I think maybe the motion needs to be, either, the motion needs to be that we include Proposition 14 in the ordinance and it either die for lack of second or be voted down.
I'm fine with that. I just want it clear.
Yeah, I think it should be action. You understand what I'm saying? I don't think.
So a motion can be made, but if nobody seconds it, then.
It'll just die.
A motion that it's included.
Yeah, or you can have a motion and give a second and it can die five to zero, to vote against.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we include Proposition 14.
Include it, okay.
Yes. I'll second that.
No.
Okay, that's okay.
It's all right, but then when you vote.
You don't have to.
It's okay, you're open to discussion.
This is not, this is, this is only discussion for you.
Let me, let me get straight on what's been.
We don't.
I'll make a motion and it dies for a second, but it's not included.
Okay. I think they need to direct. So you're, you're voting to table, I told you, team out of the process. I mean, you're.
To include.
My motion was to include it. If it gets a second, then it has to die.
Their term is to take it out of the ordinance, put it out of the charter.
So they have a vote on it and we're not.
But their term is for.
I'll vote for you, but I guess what against it.
He made the motion to include it. You seconded it.
Included.
Included. Included, so then they'll say, "All those in favor, say aye."
If they vote it, they vote it.
I don't want to include it, so I'm not going to say aye. In, in this bundle.
In the ordinance.
In this bundle.
You already decided to take it out.
Because we're looking at eight and 14 separate.
Okay, you're not, you're talking about the actual.
The one that they didn't figure, they'll take out anyway.
Right here. The, the inquiry. You're talking about here, and I'm, I'm talking about here. That, that's where I'm getting confused. So I will leave it in the changes.
Is that right?
No. 14.
In this bundle right here.
It gives the, the council collectively the power to inquire into issues, including employees.
Okay.
And includes power subpoena. So I think, I think what, what the council talked about, we discussed, they want to leave it in the charter as it is. So now you've got a motion and a second to include it in the ordinance. I think the mayor needs to call for a vote, if you want to leave it like it is, then, then you vote against. I'm getting confused on the two. Okay. I understand.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Include Proposition 14.
Right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed, say no.
No.
Vote in favor.
Okay, just a minute.
Are you done for me to hold against me, since I'm making a?
No.
Worst things have happened.
Change for a moment over there.
I'll get. Okay.
Now, the only proposition has not been addressed, Proposition 8.
I, no. Should I make?
So then, is that like a second?
No.
No, we're just trying to figure out how.
Okay, so can I make a motion to include, okay, I make a motion to include Proposition Number 8.
In the ordinance.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Move and second it.
Yes.
You got a motion and a second to include Proposition 14.
I'm sorry, I missed the second. Parker?
He's second in everything, so he's putting his name out. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of including Proposition 8, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Three to two. Okay, so. That gives you.
Gives us a great big draw.
That gives you the new proposition.
The reduction ordinance, they come back to council and get it. To order that.
To order the election. So that's the next thing, is to adopt the ordinance for the election.
To order the election.
Yeah.
Three things, and the ordinance, what's the package?
We have to reauthorize, our voters will reauthorize the straight maintenance tax. Straight maintenance tax, that quarter patch, no, that, when we voted, that we have to reauthorize that, and then also then the mayor's race will be the general election. So we'll have two special elections, we'll have two special elections, the council will, special elections and a general election.
Does anybody else have anything? Thank y'all for hanging around. Want to, want to thank your office and the staff for all the work that you put in, the preparation, the, the new charter.
This has been quite an undertaking. We appreciate it.
We sincerely appreciate that. Thank you very much, and everybody had anything to do with it. And if there's nothing else, we're out, we're adjourned.